Whenever you're ready. Just me, just me.
Jenny.
All right, good evening, everyone. I would like to call the City of Escalon Planning Commission meeting for July 12th, 2022 to order. Would you all please join us in a flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The staff, can we please have a roll call?
Chair Strumman.
President.
Vice Chair Sarkozy.
Here.
Commissioner Engel.
Here.
Commissioner Willis.
Here.
Commissioner Castellanos is absent.
All right, please note that all cell phones, pagers, and similar devices need to be set or on silent or vibrate mode or turned off unless you're a non-duty emergency responders. Moving on to the consent calendar, these items are considered routine in nature and will be approved in one motion. Do we have, commissioners, do we have any comments regarding the minutes from the meeting of June 14th, 2022? Or a motion?
A motion to approve.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
One second.
We have a second. All those in favor, please respond by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? All right, motion passes four zero. Moving on to public hearing. So, on the agenda, the next item is the multifamily and senior design guidelines for Project 22-766. We're conducting a public hearing and approve a resolution recommending to city council an approval and adoption of the multifamily and senior residential design guidelines. May we please have a staff report?
So, staff report is actually going to be given by Josh?
Well, I'll actually start. Let me start, do a little introduction. Good evening, commissioners. Chairman, my name is John Anderson, J.B. Anderson Landings Planning. Our address is 131 South Stockton Avenue there in Ripon, California. This is our opportunity to work with City of Escalon on a couple different special projects funded by SB grant from the state of California. This is the first, has to do with, obviously, multifamily and senior housing. The other project that you'll be seeing probably in a month or so is a municipal service review and update, update to your growth boundary. And this has all been discussed and worked on specifically with city staff. So, that's the next project is part of that SB two grant. So, I'll let Josh Jordan, who's one of my assistant planners in my office, who worked along with myself and David Niskin on this specific project. And, obviously, I believe you've had some time to look at the guidelines. And, so that's good, and this is a recommendation ultimately to the city council. So, this is kind of, it's a public hearing, it's kind of a workshop. If you've got, obviously, questions as we go through this, here's our opportunity to go over those. It's tailored for Escalon-type projects, meaning that it's geared, it's geared towards Escalon. There are some guidelines that have been borrowed from other jurisdictions, City of Oakdale, for example, but it's been tailored for Escalon specifically. So, after having said that, I'll let Josh go through his presentation. Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Joshua Jordan, and I'm here to present the multifamily and senior residential design guidelines. Little bit of background on the project. Design guidelines are a tool that jurisdictions can use to implement design and development goals for the communities. And multifamily and senior residential housing projects have unique design considerations that design guidelines can address. The design guidelines provide the criteria the city will use to review multifamily and senior residential housing projects. And the design guidelines contain the following eight sections: housing types, site planning, circulation, and parking, building design, landscaping, safety, site elements, and also includes a self-certification checklist. Each section is organized using these following terms. Sections contain subsections for each one. Design element, it provides a general description of the section or subsection being discussed. A policy identifies mandatory elements of project planning and design. And O'Wanney principle, these principles are brought in nature and provide a basis for the policies and design guidelines. Rationale provides the underlying reasoning or explanation for the adopted O'Wanney principle. And design guidelines, these are encouraged and discouraged, design guidelines that can help guide the project development and design. The first section is housing types, and this discusses the differences between multifamily and senior residential housing. At the bottom, you have, bottom left, there is an example of a senior residential housing project, and these are usually one-story. So, it provides guidelines to be one-story and be more accessible to senior residents. It also includes policies like having community amenities that are more focused on gathering, family gathering spaces instead of things like pools that might not be used as much. And then, on the left is, on the right is an example of an apartment, which is an example of multifamily housing, and these provide a mix of different uses of different unit sizes and amenities for the mix of families and individuals living there. Site planning. This section includes the design of buildings, open spaces, landscaping, parking, and circulation of a development. And this section provides language to ensure that projects are respectful of neighboring developments, and that's mainly done in the siting, massing, and orientation that provides policies that state that the siting and the massing of buildings should respect what is developed nearby. Open space, this gives requirements for how much open space should be allocated for each housing development, and also includes policies for private open space for each unit. And community amenities, this subsection provides guidelines and policy on what amenities should be provided based on if it's either multifamily or senior residential, and how many units, like, there are, the larger units. The developments with more units get more community amenities, and multifamily would say only four units wouldn't be required to have any community amenities. So, on the left here is an example of site planning that is a good example of site planning with buildings located towards the outside, and the community amenities and open space located interior and central to the site, so the residents have better access and it is easier to use. And on the right is an example of a community amenity that can be installed for a larger multifamily developments, clubhouse, and a swimming pool. Circulation and parking, this section provides policies for circulation, parking, garage ports, garages, and carports. It also has policies that mandate the separation of pedestrian vehicular facilities, so there's safety. The four subsections in this section are access, circulation, parking, garages, and carports. For access, this talks about the access to the site. There must be two entries for emergency vehicle access. Circulation focuses on the ease and safety of circulation throughout the site and make sure it's well-designed. And parking, parking is required to be, is guided to be located interior to the site, so it's less, it's out of the way of public view. And garages and carports, these are also guided to be interior to the site, and when detached from the buildings, they're required to match the architecture. On the left here, we have an example of circulation to the site. You can see there's two access points for emergency vehicle access. And then, on the right, we have an example of a detached carport that matches the architecture of the multifamily housing. Building design, this section includes building size, architecture features, and entry elements. And once again, building size is encouraged to match the development of nearby neighborhoods, and that's addressed in the subsection scale, height, and massing. That subsection also encourages variation in scale, height, and massing for more architectural variation and visually appealing aesthetics. And elevation design does the same sort of thing. It calls for variation in materials and what is provided on the elevation in terms of windows, balconies, trim, and other architectural features. Access points are guided to be visually prominent and located in a manner that is safe. It also, when there's multiple units sharing an access point such as a landing, that's discouraged to be on the outside of the building, so a large, a large landing strip is discouraged, and access points are encouraged to be clustered in four units. So, it's not one large access point. And materials and colors are guided to be durable, so they last for a long time, and also have visual appeal, so things such as stucco wood siding. And that, and colors are also encouraged to be varied on the elevation, so there is architectural interest there. And on the left, we have an example of varying scale and massing in the elevation, and you can see how that creates an architectural interest. And on the right, we see an elevation which varies the material, materials, the architecture features with a balcony, and the access point is not located on the outside, so there's no large landing. It's located on the interior, which is encouraged as well. The landscaping section provides guidelines for limiting water-intensive landscaping such as turf, provides guidelines for providing deciduous trees throughout the site so they can provide shade during the summer, and during winter they can let light through for more solar heat, and also provides guidelines for utilizing landscaping to define the site, so really making sure that the landscaping is cohesive with the rest of the buildings and the structures. And on the left, we have an example of deciduous trees, and these are shading the balconies and outside space and open space of the units for that multifamily development. And on the right, we have an example of sort of tiered landscaping where you have shrubs first and then trees, and then, and also ground cover such as turf, which is encouraged. For safety, this section provides policies for including subsection for safety and includes subsections on lighting and security. Enhanced lighting around building entries and high-activity areas is encouraged, provides policies for locking mechanisms for community facilities so those remain secure, and preventing of landscaping and structures that create hiding spaces, so doesn't attract unwanted visitors or... On the left, we have an example of lighting, and it's also encouraged in this section that lighting matches the architecture and overall design of the site, so the lighting is cohesive. And on the right, we have an example of sort of overgrown shrubbery and landscaping next to the building that creates these kind of unwanted hiding spaces that people could hide out in. And site elements, this is kind of a catch-all for all accessory structures. This includes walls and fencing, signage, refuse enclosures, mailboxes, storage, mechanical and utility equipment. And again, the section requires, includes policies to make sure that the design and the development is visually cohesive and visually unappealing sites remain out of the public view. This section provides signage. In the top-left corner, we have an example of a monument sign. And in the middle, we have examples of sort of fencing that is encouraged, multiple kinds of design. You have wrought iron and masonry pilasters, and then a decorative stone masonry wall, and these are also encouraged to be developed with landscaping to sort of soften that edge. On the bottom-left, we have an example of refuse enclosures, so that's part of making sure that unappealing views remain out of the public view, so they're required to have stone masonry enclosures, metal fencing, and landscaping wraparound. And on the right side, we have an example of what is encouraged for mailboxes, they're encouraged to be in central locations next to other accessory structures or community amenities, in highly visible places that are well-trafficked. And they're also encouraged to have a design and architecture features that match the overall development, so they're not just tacked on somewhere. The last part of the design guidelines is a self-certification checklist. This checklist contains the guidelines and policies of the multifamily and senior residential design guidelines, and it's a tool for both applicants and the city when reviewing the project for compliance. And this checklist must be completed and submitted along with formal applications for housing development projects, specifically multifamily and senior residential. This project qualifies for the common sense exemption rule of the SECO guidelines under Section 15061b3, which states that SECO only applies to projects which have the potential for causing a significant impact on the environment. And staff is recommending that the planning commission approves a resolution recommending to the city council approval and adoption of the multifamily and senior residential design guidelines. And that concludes my presentation. Let me know if you have any questions.
Couple, couple comments that I want to make is that before, the City of Escalon didn't have these kind of guidelines, and you look at the introduction, it's very clear that this is a living, breathing document, and it's intended to help the planning commission in this case evaluate projects as they move forward, as well as inform project proponents, architects, whatnot, as to what the city's expectations are as it relates to the various design elements for these types of projects. So, that's, that's discussed on page two of the design guidelines under the introduction. And then, on page three, there's a paragraph towards the bottom that talks about, you know, that there will, you guys will, I'm certain of it, will receive requests for deviation from these standards, but the intent is that these basic policies and procedures would be, would form the basis upon which you could ask for additional information and/or a project proponent could introduce new types of design criteria. So, you know, I've been, I've been working with multifamily projects, you know, here in the Central Valley for probably over 40 years, and I can tell you that without design guidelines, extremely difficult as a planning planner, as a planner, either as staff or as a commissioner, to evaluate these projects unless you have something like this. So, it's, it's a tremendous tool, and, and, you know, and again, I think it embraces a lot of the things that we've heard from the community and things, and the feedback that we've got back from staff. So, I don't know if the commission wants to go through the guidelines that we presented page by page, or if you had specific areas that you wanted us to look at or to talk about. But again, it's kind of an open workshop. It is a public hearing. And the end of the day, you know, we're going to be, you're going to be making recommendations to city council, and then city council will be considering this as well. Thank you.
Right, with that, before, excuse me, before we open the public hearing, are there any questions for staff or for Mr. Anderson, from the commissioners?
Just, just a comment. You talked about the guidelines being helpful to us, but over the years, as we've had projects proposed to us and they have not passed, the people who proposed those projects would have benefited from guidelines like this. So, it would benefit both sides.
Yes, it would.
I'm looking forward to that.
Commissioner Sarkozy?
Yeah, I think the same way there. We've had things, projects come to us where, and I feel like we're making a judgment or opinion call and don't have a document, a reference point, standards that we can reference and point to and say, this is what we're looking for. So, this is very helpful.
I, I think this is one of the big reasons why, you know, Dominic and staff, I mean, they felt it was very important to use, you know, the grant opportunity to do just this, to give you guys the tools that you need to evaluate the projects as they move forward. And you're right, Commissioner Willis, it's both sides of the table. It's, it helped, it certainly helps the architect understand what the expectations are, but on the other hand, it also helps the decision-makers, right, evaluate a project based on the merits of its presentation against something, and you've got something in writing. My experience is this self-certification checklist helps quite a bit, and I've got, I'm working on a couple of projects right now, and Mountain House is an example where I don't have that, and it's, 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 it's more, it's more complex and more difficult to explain to property owners and to architects and to experts, you know, what the expectations are. So, this is good, this will, this will work as a good tool.
Commissioner Engel?
I have no comments.
Well, before we open the public hearing, I just wanted to, first of all, say thank you. It's super important to me that you worked with the Senior Fund Bunch and Anne Shaddix, because they are the livelihood of the senior community here in Escalon. So, thank you very much for working with Anne and with Jerry and their team. Before we get in, I'll share the rest of my comments after we open up the public hearing. So, with that, we will open up the public hearing at 6:53 PM. If you have any comments or concerns, feel free to come up to the podium, just state your name, and share your thoughts, your ideas, so we can get this into the public record.
I'm John Vaughn.
Can you step up to the podium, please?
Yes, I'm John Vaughn, and I really don't have a concern, but I'd like to know the location of this development.
I don't think there is a development currently. This is just, these are just design guidelines for any future development here within the City of Escalon.
Okay, so it's not, nothing's been set in stone, or?
Correct. These are just guidelines so that, say, a developer does come to the city, similar to what we had at, earlier this year at Irwin Village, where a developer would come and Jenny and city staff would say, okay, here are design guidelines that you need to follow when you're designing either a multifamily or a senior residential housing project.
Okay, thank you.
Come on up, ma'am. It's a, it's a public hearing. We need feedback. Don't be shy. Can you tell us your name, please?
Sharon Vaughn.
Okay.
Do you let the landowners that butt right up to the city know about these projects? Because we do, and that's why we were just here.
So, recently, we have changed the notification recommendation. We provided recommendations to council. Do those get mailed outside if people are outside of the city limits?
Yes, as long as they're within however many feet for that specific project. So, if, if there's a project that's going to be 600 or 1,200 feet from your property, you would get notified?
We are like 12 inches.
Okay, so, recently, or previous to the last meeting, it was, the notification was 300 feet, and there were some folks that felt that that needed to be expanded. So, we, how far did we expand it at the last meeting?
I'm going to say it's 1,200 feet for the bigger item projects, the more impact, and 600 feet for the other ones, for minor things.
So, if it's a major development, anything within 1,200 feet of that development, you will get notified that, hey, there's a proposed development coming in, and then, when that project is coming before planning commission for approval, that's where you would come before the planning commission and share either your concerns or your support for the project. So, we've expanded that circumference, if you will, for the notification. We've, we've increased the, or the notifications, so now they're posting it on social media. I mean, it's going to be blasted everywhere. We're putting up signs for any proposed development, so we've revised that as a result of what happened earlier this year.
Okay, we just put up the fence in between us and, and the city, so...
You will still be notified, so...
Okay, thank you.
Work with us. Ms. Shaddix?
I'm Anne Shaddix, and yes, the seniors were very specific and gave you specific guidelines, and actually, I thought that you did a very good job of incorporating what we're asking for. Just help me with a couple of things, though. When you talk about residential and senior housing, the senior housing, we want to be independent, we don't want it to be connected with residential housing. Can you, is that clear in the document?
So, so that, can I, if I can respond? So, the guidelines that are presented are specific either to multifamily or senior residential, and the senior residential could either be attached or detached housing. It's not intended to guide normal residential development, to include normal residential development and senior housing. So, that, that's not the intent. The intent is for it to address senior housing of a couple different types, whether it's attached or detached. And that's, I think that's pretty similar to what, you know, Bethany Home has done, right, in Ripon, I mean, where it's either attached or detached. So, that's addressed in, in these guidelines, yes.
Okay. And it's been a while since I've read it, so just to refresh my memory, did you address the number of units, or was that not a part of?
It's not really part of the exercise.
Okay.
That's not part of this exercise. You mean, as to what the demand is?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not, it's really, not really part of this exercise. I think, you know, obviously, there's a big, there's tremendous need for senior housing opportunities in the City of Escalon. What we heard, heard is that they're, you know, they're not necessarily interested in, you know, swimming pools and that kind of stuff, it was a guy... you know, swimming pools and that kind of stuff, which the guidelines address. They are, there was a concern expressed relative to rent value, and obviously, that's an issue that'll come up when you actually have a developer that comes in wanting to offer those types of projects. So that, that's, that's something that's not really addressed in these guidelines. Quite frankly, it's not addressed in any guidelines, but something you'll deal with on a project-by-project basis.
Okay, that was all I had.
You got it, Anne, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shaddix. Jerry, can we go four for four? Do you have any comments? Okay. And do we have any folks online?
Just Dominique.
Right. All right. Any comments from Dominique? Okay, with that, we will close the public hearing at 7:00 PM and bring it back to the commission for comments or questions, clarifications. Let's start with Commissioner Engel.
I think I'd just like to address, I'm sorry, your name's Jordan?
Joshua.
Joshua, Jordan. Just to Joshua's question, how we'd like to go ahead and assess these guidelines, if we'd like to go through it page by page, piece by piece, bullet by bullet. Does the commission have an intended direction, or something that they would like to do with that?
I have notes in several of the divisions.
Okay, my recommendation would be, if, if you have items on a particular page, why don't you just pull up that particular page, if you have any items, and then we can see if any other commissioners have items for that page, or we can go page by page. I mean, it's not a huge document, so... Any, before we go page by page, were there any other general comments? So actually, I have one general comment, and just for the sake of transparency, just so the commissioners and our constituents know, Ms. Shaddix and I have been working together to try to bring a senior residential project to the city of Escalon now for probably five or six months, and we will continue to work on that, but I want the commissioners and our constituents to know that I am acting in that capacity as a private resident, not as a planning commissioner, so that everybody knows what's going on, because without editorializing, I, I believe that what happened on Irwin, at Irwin Village was truly a tragedy on many different ways, and I think that Anne and I have developed a, a close friendship, and it's important to me that we definitely address the senior housing need immediately within the city of Escalon. So, just so everybody's aware. The one comment that I had related to these design guidelines is, Joshua, I don't see any mention regarding accessibility for senior housing. There are no accessibility requirements in this document as far as paved surfaces, level surfaces, durable materials, because our senior community, we can't have ondulations and rolling hills, we need something for seniors to be able, for ease of access. And so, is there any way that we can incorporate some specific accessibility requirements into the senior housing portion of this?
While you're researching that, just to your statement there, Sean, after your statement, I just want to make sure that we're clear on that part, as you're working with Ms. Shaddix on any of the senior development housing, that there's no intent for financial gain on your part?
Absolutely not.
Just wanted to clarify for the record, thank you.
120%, I'm doing it, honestly, as a favor to Ms. Shaddix, actually, and she's doing me a favor, kind of bridging that gap between, honestly, between generations.
Sorry, Dominique has, Dominique has asked to be put on speaker.
Hi, am I on speaker?
Yes.
Good evening, Dominique.
Okay. Hi, everyone, I'm sorry I couldn't be there at the meeting. I have been paying attention on GoTo, but it was a little delayed, and so I couldn't tell when I, when I could talk, because there was some feedback and delay. But I, I wanted to start off by thanking everyone who participated in this process, the Senior Fund Bunch, Anne Shaddix, a couple other groups that we had interviewed at the time, when we were starting off, moving forward with senior housing, as well as potential developers that we were talking with at the time, that was helping, that were helping us with the multifamily. I want to thank JB Anderson, John Anderson, David Niskanen, and Josh for helping us out. It's been a long road getting this type of, these type of guidelines done. JB Anderson is also handling our municipal services review, so you will see them again in the next few meetings, coming back with, with that for Planning Commission and then council review as well. And then I wanted to thank Jenny for hosting the meeting for me and Diana. Both of us ended up scheduling vacations at the same time, and so she, she took one for the team and has attended the meeting on everyone's behalf, and I just wanted to make sure that, that I thanked her, to everyone, for, for helping me out with that.
Thanks.
And then if you guys have any other questions that maybe I, I might not have heard or missed, please let me know, and I can, I can answer them.
All right. Thank you, Dominique. I hope you're sitting on a beach, listening to the Planning Commission meeting. So, back before, to answer your question, Commissioner Engel, it's purely voluntary, my, my working with Ms. Shaddix. Sure.
If I could answer your question on accessibility, I would say in the circulation and parking section, there's the subsection on access, and...
What page are you on?
That's a page 16.
Okay.
And it does have policies for ensuring safety of pedestrians and moving easily throughout the site, so that's a policy that could be included for accessibility, and also includes a policy for barrier-free access for the handicapped, so I believe that would fall under that as well.
Okay. Well, we'll, we'll get into other comments as we go page by page, so... Does everybody have a copy of these design guidelines that would like one? Would you guys like?
There's one right out on the table, there's one extra packet just outside the front doors, these doors here on the right.
We'll wait till she comes back, and we'll go through them. Starting, so, do we need to rearrange these at all?
Oh, sure.
One second. So Jenny, let's actually back up to the cover p, cover page, actually, to the second page. So, I would like the acknowledgements to be rearranged based off of the given structure of the Planning Commission. So, Commissioner Sarkozy is the vice chair, I'm the chair, and Commissioner Willis is listed as a commissioner. In addition to that, Ms. Romo is no longer the interim city manager, she is the city And I don't know if Dorothy Miller's name is spelled correctly or not, but something to look into. Moving on to page two, any comments there from the commission? Page three. Page four. Page five. And for our audience, if you have comments, actually, we have to reopen the public hearing, but it's important that we, if we get any comments from any of you, feel free to speak Page six, housing types.
I had one, one question, kind of add-on to Anne's question about the different types of housing, say, within a senior, senior project. The guidelines are, they, it is within the guidelines to have different types, let's say it's all senior, but you could have attached and detached housing, correct?
Yes.
Within that same development?
Yes.
But all for seniors?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I, I don't mean to criticize, I'm not sure what the capability of our fire department is, so I do like the idea of keeping any multifamily residential housing to two floors or one, but not higher than two for firefighting work.
Okay. And I don't know, as I sit here today, what your code requirement is, maybe Dominic knows, there might be a height limitation in your current city development code.
Did you hear that?
Might be 30 feet. Generally, in a multifamily locate, location, it's 30-foot, which would get up to three stories.
On page seven, could we make, to Commissioner Willis's point, add a bullet that says, we strongly encourage developments for multifamily, two stories?
Again, it has to be consistent with what your development code says, that's what I'm trying to get at. I'm not sure exactly how that reads.
If you guys could look into that.
Dominique, do you have an answer for that?
Jenny, can you repeat that?
Yeah, so they're wanting to know, they would like to recommend that multifamily is no higher than two stories, but we're not sure what's actually written in our municipal code.
So, our municipal code, because it's a multifamily project, our municipal code currently allows that as a permitted use in the R3 and the C2, and so we typically don't have height, height restrictions. I don't believe, I'd have to double-check, but if they were to propose an elevator, we would typically accept it so long as, as, you know, that's approved as a part of the site and architecture. I can double-check to see if there's anything in the municipal code. Typically, specific to senior housing, just about, just about every potential developer I've spoken to regarding senior housing likes to keep it single-story because it's, because it's senior housing. I really haven't had anybody for smaller projects, which we don't typically get, large projects per se, go, go above a, above a two-story. I just don't, I don't think that a project like that would come to town anytime soon, so for the most part, they've all stuck to seniors, a single-story when it comes to seniors.
Right.
But we can double-check and let, and let Planning Commission know.
So, so I interpret that to mean that, basically, with, with seniors, we're looking at single-story products?
Single, senior.
And for, for the rest of the apartment projects, the Planning Commission's desire is to limit it to two stories. But we need to verify what your development code allows or doesn't allow.
Well, even if you address the, the need for an elevator, but I'm still thinking of fire safety, you know, what our fire department can...
Understood.
The equipment that they have.
Understood.
And we don't want, I mean, the, the architecture of the city of Escalon is pretty typical two-story. We don't want a, a tower of multifamily housing, three stories, because it wouldn't match any of the existing architecture within the city of Escalon. Does that clarify your point?
I also would add, depending on the site, a developer may come in, and it's more, it's a small site, and developer needs to get X amount of units, he may have, the developer he or she may have to propose a three-story building.
Well, that's why we're using the term strongly encourage. Doesn't mean they can't, but it's strongly encouraged that two-story, we would prefer to keep it at two-story.
Okay.
And with any project, the proposal would go to the fire department for them to respond, and they could certainly tell us that they don't have the equipment for that particular structure.
Any other comments on page seven?
Since it appears that we've clearly defined multifamily housing and senior residential housing, does this discourage or disable developers to come in and try and incorporate the two, where they could have a single-plan development that would incorporate both single-family, or I'm sorry, multifamily housing, as well as a site for senior living?
I think in that case, you could just apply the different sections to each part of the site. It doesn't really specify that only, the site can only have multifamily housing or senior residential.
Is there a way that we can get that in there so that it's very specific?
Uh...
I think that's, that'd be a goal for the city, right? Would not be to amass our, our seniors with multifamily housing, just traffic differences, property usage differences, volume differences.
We don't have too many transportation centers within the city of Escalon. Can we, on the first bullet point, can we make a note that says, housing located close to development, including transportation centers, commercial shopping centers, and other community amenities?
I think that's actually covered under your transportation section.
Okay.
There's, there's, there's another point in the guidelines that talks about that specifically. So let's, let's make a sidebar here.
This, this is a point, I think, that comes up again, but you have a picture there of Heritage House, and yes, it has a lovely centrally-located collection area for the residents, however, it's not covered. And as I talk to the citizens who live there, a pergola, some sort of covering would be real nice to gather under. Yes, trees provide shade, but they drop things, they make walking hazardous. Also, a covering over parking is nice, a pergola or, or a solar covering, like what they're putting in around the community, rather than a, a tree or, or something. So many of the seniors don't get out of their units every day, when they finally do get to their vehicle, it's hot, the sun has caused it to get hot, or if it's raining, it's not the best, so covered parking, I think, should be encouraged or required, or...
On both multifamily and senior, or?
No, I'm thinking more of senior.
So, are we on page seven or page eight?
Eight.
Because you guys are talking about senior, and I'm looking at senior, and there's already discussions relative to encouraging housing located close to development, such as transportation centers and commercial shopping centers, so there's...
I think we jumped ahead.
Yeah, I think so, too. I, I'm sorry, I'm still kind of curious as if there is any type of separation in the guidelines between somebody being able to develop multifamily housing and senior residential in the same development. Is that, is there a guideline that says that the area to be developed shall be specific to either one or the other?
No, it, it leaves it up to the developer.
Right, I mean, it, you would, you would, you would, in that case, if it was on the same property, then you would use the guidelines for the multifamily and the guidelines for senior housing on that same site. That's what you do.
And I think if it's specific to a senior housing project, then it would be deed restricted specifically for seniors.
For that specific area?
No, so if it's specific to, so say, a development, a developer came in and wanted to do, to do specific senior housing, then they would come before this, as to us, and as for a conditional use permit specific for senior housing, and then we would put a deed restriction on that development, but any developer can come... But any developer can come before us and say, "Okay, I have fifty units that are multifamily. I have thirty units that are senior housing." So a developer would, kind of blending this whole document.
So, but correct me if I'm wrong, please. If it came to us and, and for that matter, wouldn't we only be looking at site and architecture? And as far as occupancy, is that something that wouldn't be out of planning commission's hands?
I don't know. Can you answer that, Jenny?
I believe so. Generally, these types of projects are just site and architecture that are coming to planning commission. As long as it's something that's allowed in that zoning.
So something along those lines. I would just be concerned about providing the housing for our seniors, because obviously, it's a need, and not commingling multifamily residential housing with the senior housing, so that we're, we're providing the type of senior housing that it seems like our residents want, not what the developer feels that they can cram into the space.
Dominique?
I mean, they're really, I mean, let me try to answer this. I mean, they're really, they're really two separate distinct issues here. I mean, if, and, and every project will be evaluated on its own merits. So if there are certain characteristics, like, like either, either rent control or value for purchase that, that want to be somehow regulated by the city, you know, that would be through that, that individual site permit, either through a development agreement or some other instrument like that, where you'd be able to do it. It's not really, it's not really the purpose behind developing the design guidelines. Design guidelines are more, you know, architecture, signage, access, parking, you know, these types of things that are really relative to the project specifically. You know, outside of that, outside of that, outside of that restrictions, you know, if the city council feels it's appropriate, you know, additional restrictions can be added. But again, that's through a site permit.
Sure.
And while I appreciate that, it would definitely affect design if we're looking at, at single, single-story senior residential mixed with potentially multi-story, multifamily.
Yeah.
So there is, there is a, a design and architecture, you know, comment that can be made. I'm just curious, I don't need to hold this up there, but I wanted to see if there was any restriction on how that can be developed.
So that's more so of municipal code discussion as opposed to the design guidelines, correct?
That, that's the way I would be leaning, yeah. I don't know that we can put that kind of restriction in the guidelines as far as if they're allowed to mix it.
Fair enough.
I understand and support what you're saying, though. Totally get it. All right. Any other comments on page seven or page eight?
Only that Chairman, I want to make sure that the language we have in here talking about, you know, encouraging housing located close to development, such as transportation centers, commercial shopping centers, this is the type of thing you were talking about.
Right.
Correct. I mean, it's not like people are, there's a lot of buses coming through to pick seniors up.
I understand.
One, or one that goes around three times a day, so. All right. Any other comments, page eight, commissioners?
I have a comment on ten that also.
Hold on, we're almost there.
Is pertinent to eight.
Okay.
On eight, we have Heritage House. We have the parking in the center, but nobody parks too far from their unit. The, on page ten, it's encouraged, and all the cars are parked at a distance from their units. And I, I don't think that that should be encouraged, because the, I believe that the seniors would want to be closer to their homes. Not that I want everything to look like Heritage House, but.
So when we're considering parking, we want the parking to be easily accessible to the units.
I think there's a distinction between the parking for senior housing versus parking for a normal multifamily housing project. I think there's a difference between the two. And what I'm hearing is there needs to be a distinction, you know, for senior housing, and maybe an example provided of parking for senior housing.
That makes sense.
Yep. And that would come, we have a parking section, right?
Yes, circulation and parking.
Yeah.
So we could have that there.
Take that note, we'll talk about that when we get to parking. Okay. Were there any other comments, commissioners, on pages nine or ten? All right. Page eleven? All right. Page twelve? Page thirteen? I think this is where a pergola or some sort of shade would be mentioned for, specifically for, well, for multifamily or for seniors, not like it's cool in the summertime.
And you, John, you mentioned a swimming pool when you gave the presentation. Is that, I, I know the Almond Grove here in town, they filled in their pool, so I'm not sure that there are a lot of seniors who'd want a swimming pool.
Actually, you know, again, these are for multifamily and seniors, so it, it's discussed that those types of amenities really aren't necessary for senior, they're more interested in other things. And I think in Josh's presentation, he talked about, you know, community center, you know, kind of thing that can be used for, you know, for family events, that type of stuff. I think what's, what's, what's important on page thirteen is to understand the distinction between what the expectations are for major and minor recreational amenities based on the size of the project. I think that's, that's pretty important. And then also defining what we're talking about as far as, you know, what is a major amenity? What might that consist of versus a minor amenity? And again, there is a difference between that which would be required under not normal multifamily housing project and that which would be required under senior housing project. There is a difference, distinct, distinct difference.
John, do you think number, for number one, to Commissioner Willis's point, do you think that we should add a part of verbiage into this sentence that says, "Recreational amenities shall be provided, not, not only based on the number of dwelling units, but based on the planned occupancy?"
Yep.
So that way, it's very clear that if somebody comes in with racquetball courts and tennis courts and a, and a swimming pool and all of these amenities that the seniors aren't going to need, then at least there's a design guideline that say, "Why the heck are you having racquetball and tennis courts for seniors?"
So there is, there is a statement on, on page fourteen under the design guidelines, talking about encouraging, and there's specific language in there, talking about senior residential housing should prioritize, prioritize places for family gatherings over recreational amenities.
That's good.
So that's, I mean, that was a, that was a direct comment that was provided by Ann and her group, you know. But if we, you know, fine, if we need to beef up, you know, the language in other areas, I don't have a problem with that. I mean, that's, I mean, it's, this is your document.
I think we need to make a, I mean, no offense, but on page fourteen, it's just encouraging. I think page thirteen's a little bit more like, "Hey, you got to pay attention to this." Any other comments on page thirteen, commissioners? Okay, page fourteen?
It's a good comment, I like that, it was a good comment. Okay, where are we, fourteen?
Correct.
Okay.
Comments fourteen? None, fifteen? All right, Josh.
Circulation and parking.
Yeah.
If there could be.
What page are you on, sir?
Fifteen.
Fifteen? And it's going to overflow to sixteen a little bit, but I'm going to just jump ahead a page to make sure I'm not missing something. Is there designation in this parking section that differentiates the parking requirements between senior housing and multifamily? Did I miss that?
In what way?
In the aspect of wanting to have senior housing parking closer to the dwellings or having them not be offset to the properties? Is there anything that distinguishes three, three points, zero, three point one, three point two, or three point three? Is there anything in there that, that differentiates parking guidelines for either development? Or it looks just kind of broad and could apply to both?
I don't think that it does.
On page sixteen, can we add specific language as Commissioner Engel and Commissioner Willis noted for design, under design policies that, specific to senior housing projects, that the parking be located as close as possible to the units?
So I'm, I'm looking through the parking section starting on page nineteen. There's a discussion regarding shaded parking spaces. The suggestion is, under number eleven on page nineteen, that fifty percent of the parking lot be shaded with trees and/or some type of covered structure, which could be an awning, which on top of that has, you know, solar, should they so choose, correct?
How did you come up with the number, the percentage of fifty percent?
That, that may have, I, I'm not sure exactly, but it may have to do with state law. State law actually has a requirement that so much of a, of a paved parking lot has to be shaded, so it may have some relationship with that.
We certainly don't want to violate state law, but I would suggest that we bump that up.
You can go higher, usually, you can go higher than fifty percent.
We, we have just put a lot of money into ripping out trees and fixing buckled sidewalks in Escalon, because of tree roots.
Wrong, wrong trees planted in the wrong area.
Yes, so I want to avoid that. That's why I went with pergolas or, or, you know, like a carport-type thing or a solar panel roof rather than a tree. And then, and then again, the trees drop things and makes it hazardous for walking.
So then, again, on, on page twenty, at the very top, it talks about, again, we're talking about parking and encouraging, it's saying, "Parking that is located centrally within the site." And the second bullet point says, "Parking that is conveniently located near the dwelling units that they serve."
Can we add?
Well, if I could rebut that, so in the, in the diagrams, bottom left-hand corner that says acceptable, parking lot is located to the rear end side of the site, which is mostly hidden from public view. If we look at where that is in relation to these units in the bottom right-hand corner of that same diagram, that's quite the distance for somebody to have to travel, especially when we're considering senior housing. I think somewhere in there, we'd like to, to be separated between multifamily housing and senior housing, where for multifamily housing, this would be an acceptable.
Understood, so.
I like the top one.
So add, so what I'm hearing is we need to add an example of how this might apply to senior housing.
Correct.
Yep.
I think there is an example there, John, this second picture down. I think that's.
What, what page are we?
On page twenty.
Page twenty?
So I think that's more of like the senior housing parking, because there's no pool there, versus the sun has a pool, so I'd say this is probably the multifamily and their parking.
Yeah, but it, I mean, it looks like it's, it's two-story as opposed to a single-story two. So, I mean, we need to be, in fact, it is, if you look at the exhibit above it. So we need to, I think we need to just key in on that senior issue.
All right, well, let's back up a couple pages. Kind of got ahead of ourselves. Any comments on page sixteen?
Next to unit.
Okay, page seventeen?
I, we had a proposal last year, I believe, and what they wanted to do was put bricks in the driveway or the parking lot or whatever. They, they wanted high-end materials in this project, and they got shot down. I don't want something expensive, like changing the, the asphalt to pavers just to show the delineation between the street and the road, if the cost is going to be higher for the seniors who live there. So I, I could agree with maybe changing the color or changing the, the surface, but I, I don't want any high-end item. Does that make sense?
Wouldn't we, as the planning commission, though, when it would come before us, we could make that note in site and architecture?
Well, we could, but then if there were some guidelines here that said, um, well, let's see, the entry, well, it says, "A different paving material and color and enhanced landscaping." I just, I just would want the cost kept down.
It, it is, it is common in these types of projects that they have to provide, you know, these safe routes. And, and in most cases, like ninety-nine percent of the time, they'll do pavement delineation. Now, that's either through stamped concrete or coloration or something like that in their site plan. And from a cost perspective, there's really not that much added to it.
Okay.
Because you, because you're only doing a very small part of the overall project. You're not suggesting, you know, you're going to be, this isn't negative, well, maybe it is, like the city of Ripon, where the entire streets are all, you know, paved. I mean, that's not what's being suggested. You're using it in very focused areas, so. And in most cases, it has that purpose, you know, it's, you know, this is a pedestrian crossing or an access point, kind of thing.
Any other comments on page seventeen? So the big thing, I think, in this whole section, that what we're requesting, that you really take a deep dive and double-check, triple-check, is make sure that we have ease of access for our seniors.
Understood.
All right. Comments on page eighteen? All right. Page nineteen, I would, on number eleven, I would kindly request that we strike the shade trees sentence and just say, "How did my fellow commissioners feel about bumping up this percentage from fifty percent? What do you guys think?"
To what? Trees or covered parking?
Just, so, strike.
Covered structures.
Strike the shade trees and just say, "Shall be shaded with covered structures." But is fifty percent okay? Sixty, seventy, seventy-five? What do you all think?
Did we conclude that fifty was a state minimum?
Yes. We can go higher, we just can't go lower.
I'm going to, I'll think out loud here. Heritage House, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, nineteen, if Heritage House has twenty units and it looks like maybe forty parking spaces, fifty might be, then it would get the residents and not the guest parking.
That's not, fifty total is fifty percent, it would only be twenty.
Well, yeah, half.
Is that enough, you think?
I think so. Depending on, yeah, depending on how many units there are. I think so, depending on, you know, depending on how many units there are.
What do you think, Commissioner Engel?
I like that there's a minimum. As far as encouraging additional outbuildings or utility structures, if it was not cost-effective to the developer and could, money could be used, excuse me, better on, um, architecture and amenities to the facility. In my opinion, I think I'd rather see a better amenity usable at the facility than a shaded structure. With that, the fifty percent is good to me.
And I think if you read on page twenty, what we're encouraging, so we're telling them, hey, we really want you to do solar panels and shade structures, parking that's protected from the weather. So, I think working, those two items, working in concert with each other.
So, could we leave eleven as it is, and then, under design guidelines, encourage more than fifty percent shade coverage, rather than make a policy?
What do you guys feel about?
I also thought.
I like that, and also, I mean, there are trees that can provide shade without ruining underground.
That's right.
So, I would, I propose keeping eleven as is, and then, under encouraged, encourage shade structures, and not, not encourage trees, but don't say you can't have them.
Fair enough. Any comments, any other comments on page twenty?
So, if I go back to nineteen?
Sure.
Number one and two, are those standards, the one and a half and one-half of parking per unit?
Yeah, those are already development standards.
Okay.
And, and they can be beefed up. I mean, I've been involved in projects where the parking requirements are in, are in direct relationship to the number of bedrooms per unit. So, for example, if you have a one-bedroom unit, you only need one parking space. If you have a three-bedroom unit, you might need two. Anything behind, below, between that would be one and a half. And then, of course, it's important to have consideration for guest parking.
I just, I think, you know, if we're thinking the difference between senior and multifamily, one and a half, basically, two, two units per senior housing, is that, is that the appropriate? Or is that too high? I would assume they're mostly one-bedrooms.
I, you know, I, I, I think with senior, there might be consideration for reduced parking. They may only need, you know, parking for one.
So, do we expand bullet number one to say, based off of intended occupancy? Or provide appropriate, so, well?
I, I, I think, I think, I think you just add to that, or you, or you have, yeah, actually, you just add to it, and say, for, for senior housing, it could be, you know, reduced to one, one parking space per unit. I don't know, I mean, that's.
All of a sudden, it sounds small, doesn't it?
Well, no, I mean, it's all, it'll, I mean, I mean, again, we're, we're throwing a broad, we're casting a broad net over stuff, over projects, over site plans. And as these projects come forward, they're going to have deviations to these standards, and it's going to be based on what their proposal is. So, they may, I mean, there should be the opportunity to ask for exceptions to these under certain circumstances, and you should be afforded the opportunity to make that determination.
There is, but the guidelines, I'm assuming is there to reduce those opportunities?
Well, I mean, that's another thing. See, these are guidelines, these aren't mandates.
Right.
These are guidelines. So, the desire is to have these type of parking spaces for these projects. However, there are exceptions, depending on what's presented. And maybe, maybe that's what you state. I mean, there has to be, you know, there, there can be an exception, you know, to this parking design policy as it relates to senior housing.
I have a question, I have a question for an audience member, Ms. Shaddix. What do you typically think is the appropriate parking for seniors? Okay, thank you. So, John, for specific for seniors, I think we should make that note.
I, I, I think so. I think it'd be helpful, it'd be helpful to the designer-developer, and also afford you guys the opportunity to grant an exception, based on design, which is what you want.
Does that work for the commission?
I want to say something. For the self-certification checklist, it says, while the design guidelines encourage creative design, overall compliance with the guidelines is not optional?
Well, we have, so the parking-wise, like, we already have rules in place in our municipal code for parking. So, again, these are just guidelines, but we have our rules of, you know, we have to have this many for this square footage, or.
But I think what Commissioner Willis is stating is that we're saying these are guidelines, but on the self, on the self-checklist, it says you can't deviate from this.
Yeah.
That's where the.
The planning commission reserves a right to determine proposed projects' compliance with the guidelines and policies identified in the design guidelines.
Right, so you're going to have, like, a site and architecture come before you.
Right.
And they will have filled this out to the best of their ability. Anything that doesn't match up, that's going to be up to you to determine if that's okay for that specific project. It's really just, it's almost like to help streamline your site and architecture meetings, so that you can be like, okay, they have, you know, A through J checked, this one isn't checked off, so let's go over that one. We're not worried about all these other ones that already meet our guidelines.
So, what we're talking about under parking for seniors, I mean, we're already acknowledging that there's an opportunity for an exception to that, to one space, based on design. I think that, I think that's good.
So, then, are we, are we adding that in there? I just want to make sure that I'm clear.
Now, I, my, my, what I'm hearing is, that needs to be added to, on page nineteen, under design policy number one.
That it should be reduced, that, that one parking space?
May be reduced to one space per unit, depending on the design, or senior.
For seniors.
For seniors, so what I kind of just heard from Ms. Shaddix's comment was that more than one space is needed for, for senior parking, because one was covered, and there were additional parking spaces for visitors, especially if the seniors handicapped or need some type of assistance. Everybody was utilizing their one space. Now, there's no additional parking for their visitors, so reduction in space is not key in this area.
We still have the half guest per unit spot. So, if you have a forty-unit thing, you're still going to have twenty guest spots.
Right, so you have the forty-one, you have the forty-one spots, or forty single spots for those particular units, then you'll have a series of twenty guest spots that anybody can use.
Sure. Which, which is a reduction in parking, for that matter, if there was that need. Leaving it at one and a half, and taking the half leaves two, two spaces on average per dwelling. Doing anything below that reduces that.
Part, I mean, okay, so, when you're doing a site design for multifamily housing project, whether it's attached, detached, senior, non-senior, some of the, some of the criteria that really affects your site planning, one is parking spaces, reservation for parking spaces. Two is the amount of space that you have to set aside for open space, whether it's for landscaping, amenities, common open space, whatever that one might, that might be. And that pretty much dictates to you what you have left to build your units. And the other thing is that, you know, we need to be, I mean, in the end of the day, we've got to be cognizant of the fact that, you know, as we add these requirements, we're adding costs. So, and what we're trying to do, in the end of the day, right, is develop a high-quality project, but also be reasonable, in the end of the day, so the, the folks that reside within this community would be able to move into these type of units. So, so providing that level of flexibility, I think, is, is beneficial. Then you guys ultimately make a decision whether or not, based on that project, that they've met your goals and objectives in, in presenting their project, so.
I'm trying to, I have next-door, former next-door neighbors who had to move to the park in Modesto, they had to give up their vehicle, they can't drive. So, when I go there, I park. When their family goes there, they park.
Yep.
There's a gal in Almond Grove that I pick up and take places. She's got her car parked right next to her, she can't drive. It sits there, and so I need to park in front. And then again, at Heritage House, there, there's one woman in particular who, who goes around doing things for several people. So, her van will go, come back and take care, and then go and come back, and so the other vehicles will just sit there. And so, I'm thinking there are different types of units, different, and then what's coming in the future? Are we going to have electric cars? Are we going to have, you know, are we going to have a better bus system? Are we going to have, what's going to change in the community?
I agree with all of that. If I can just add back onto that parking section, if we refer back to page fourteen, under design guidelines, we encourage, senior residential housing should prioritize places for family gatherings for the recreational amenities. In order to accommodate that, their families can visit them, we need to provide them a place to park. And when we're looking at the, the guidelines, which says one and a half spaces per, I'm sorry, go back.
Per dwelling unit?
Per dwelling unit. The other half unit is for off-street parking. Now, any, anytime we're looking at family gatherings, I think we're a family-oriented town. People want to visit, they want to hang out. Now, we're, by eliminating those few parking spaces, we're making it more difficult for access. And please feel free to override me, it's just my opinion, and I want to make sure that it was stated. I think that one and a half and the half should be the minimum, which essentially provides two parking spaces per dwelling.
So, you're suggesting just leaving one and two alone?
I am, and not having a reduction. They, they can always have less than ask, if that's the case, right? So, if we're going to ask for, so to have a variance, or for there to be a, a change to that, that would be where they could request, hey, we don't have enough space on our site, can we get it approved to come down to one and, and a half? And then we can look at that individually and say yes or no, but we're setting a standard or a guideline, and I think it's better to err in the, in that favor, for that instance.
All right, sounds like we have consensus from the planning commission.
Just, uh.
So, so, so I'm clear, so leave it alone, then, basically, is what I'm hearing?
Leave it alone.
Could I bring up one thing?
No.
I want you guys to think about Willow Heights. I used to live at Willow Heights, and I can tell you that every single parking spot for those apartments is taken up like their actual reserved spots, and pretty much every single guest spot is taken up, because there's so many cars that they actually have to utilize, like, every guest spot. And then sometimes you get people parking on the street, that's where the visitors are parking.
Those are younger people, they're not seniors.
Right, no, I'm not saying you're senior.
Chances are, each unit has got more than one driver.
Because this is for multi-housing also.
Okay.
So, that's something to think about, like John had brought up, you know, maybe you want to think about having, if it's a two-bedroom or three-bedroom, more spots designated versus a one-bedroom. Because if you have a one-bedroom, that gives you two spots for that one-bedroom unit. You have the one and a half, plus the half for the guests. So, that's two spots automatically. So, if you have two adults living in that one unit, they have their two spots, no worries about, you know, parking off.
Well, that's why I mentioned, based off the intended occupancy, because if it's a senior housing project, and there's one person, and it's a one-bedroom, then one parking space would be sufficient. Whereas, if it's a three-bedroom and a multifamily, they may have four vehicles, then what do they do?
I would just think to err a little bit on the higher side, because they can always come to you asking for a reduction.
We, I think we did right. We aired on the.
You've kept it as, as is. I would think to even, to go John's route of, if it's a two-bedroom or three-bedroom, more are required, versus just one and a half per dwelling unit.
Based off the intended occupancy, as opposed to just one, one and a half spots. And then, for seniors in particular, as Ms. Shaddix mentioned, they need one spot, so they get that one spot, and then there's a reserved guest spot for family members.
I think it's going to be, if for multifamily, I think the whole complex is going to be parking, if we do that. I think the expectation of a multi-complex, multifamily complex is, some people will have to park on the street.
It's very possible for a two-bedroom unit that was housing two sets of adults to have four vehicles. A three-bedroom unit, maybe with adults and kids of driving age, potentially have six vehicles, whatever the occupancy is. I would be okay with, with having something in there with, well, everything is subjective, and they could, they could request the change, but if there was some verbiage that wanted to be added in there, as far as, you know, adding something, or additional spots based on occupancy, I'd be okay with that.
Occupancy or bedroom count?
Occupancy, so each one of those bedrooms should have a limited amount of people that can occupy. So, a three, a three-bedroom unit could be occupied and only have one person on the lease, they just want the other two bedrooms for their game room, or their office, or whatever. But there are limits on the amount of people that can occupy each, each dwelling.
I want to say it's two people per bedroom plus one. I think that's what the law states.
That's, that sounds right.
Any comments from the peanut gallery?
I believe the occupancy maxes are two people per bedroom plus one. So, if you have a two-bedroom unit, it would be a max occupancy of five, I think. You guys, I'm not saying you have to change your mind. I'm just saying, as a person who has lived in many apartment complexes over my short span of life, because I'm very young, parking is always an issue.
In multifamily, definitely.
In multifamily, yeah.
All right, so leave it as is, make changes. What do you all think?
I, I guess, since it's guidelines with Commissioner Engel, if we, if we keep it like this, the developer will come back to us with what they're proposing, and we can.
Now, we could say, how are you going to have parking for a three-bedroom?
What if we took it out of the policies and just put it in the guidelines as encouraged?
I think Barbara needs to stay in, in the policy portion, because then they could propose, you know. Is there a state-required minimum for these type of developments to have parking?
No, it's, it's all dependent on whether the local, local entity feels is appropriate.
Which is, which is where this came from.
Right. Our municipality is what, this, this just mimics our current guidelines?
It mimics the current code.
Well, I think we just don't touch it. If it mimics municipal code, just leave it the way it is. Okay.
And one comment that Commissioner Willis brought up, electrical cars. Is there anything in here about electrical charging stations?
That's governed by the building code, not necessarily the design guidelines.
Okay.
Building, then, with the new code that's coming out, it will be much more restrictive.
So, the, the distinction there is that we're talking about the spaces that they have to provide, and in the building code, it'll tell you of those spaces, how many have to be handicapped, how many have to be, you know, EV-accessible, charging stations, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay.
All right, any comments page twenty? Anyone?
So, I have on, I'm sorry, going back to twenty, I have on twenty that we're going to add some language talking about shade structure, and dealing with seniors and parking next to the units, and providing an example.
Right.
Okay, sorry.
However, the guidelines for the senior parking, I need to, I believe, need to be added to nineteen under policy, not under encourage or discourage. We would like that, that parking located centrally to the units, as in the diagram second, from the top on the right-hand side, yes, where you have your cursor.
So, you want that as a policy? So, that'd be policy number twelve, then.
Commissioner, do you agree with that?
That was for senior parking?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Any other comments page twenty? Page twenty-one? Page twenty-two?
Can we go back to twenty-one?
Sure.
I want to add, I want to talk about this. With, with, with apartment projects, not, I'm not talking about seniors, but just basically apartment projects, we're seeing a lot of requests for garages. In other words, living unit is above the garage. What that does is it, it, it creates. What that does is it, it, it creates a lot of hardscape, meaning that you have, um, a lot of concrete, a lot of asphalt. There's nothing really there to, to break it, soften it up with, you know, landscaping, you know, low landscaping, whatever it might be. The examples that we're providing here, you know, might not be the best examples, in that regard, if that's a concern of yours. I just wanna bring that up.
I think that would be reviewed more so during site and architecture.
But if it's the desire of the commission, you know, to soften that edge with landscape treatment, I think we need to provide an example of that, is what I'm trying to get at.
Neither of these pictures look like Escalon.
Yep, they don't.
And, uh.
Right.
Yeah.
And I circled those two points under encourage. Carports or, or solar, what would you call, what do you call the carports that they're making with the solar panels? I mean, just.
It's a carport.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just a carport.
Something like that, that could be functional as well as, well, functional more than one way.
I thought would be that with the limited space in these parking areas, um, and considering our, our current drought conditions in our last several decades with consecutive drought, drought conditions, adding a small strip to maintain and water. If we're looking for something architecturally pleasing, I think the, the added features that are here give a, a breakup and a separation.
Okay.
And visually, uh, appealing as opposed to just a flat-faced.
Okay.
Um, parking area, which looks like is, is covered.
Understood. So then the second picture then, I mean, it needs to be clarified, cause this really isn't carports. We need to have a picture in there that shows carports.
Right.
Got it, understood.
I think that, uh, design policy's, uh, item two. Garage enclosures will offer variation in building elevation, roofline setbacks, or building height to create architectural interest.
Understood. Okay.
Twenty-two?
I would, it's a silly comment, but I love the discouraged picture with the satellite dishes on it to make it even more unattractive, all pointing in the same direction.
You gotta give them pictures.
Please double-check design policies number three as far as, um, the height requirements that we mentioned. We wanna try to strongly encourage two-story. All right, comments on twenty-two? Twenty-three? Twenty-four?
The middle picture is encouraged, covered staircase. But I, I would look at that and think of a, an absence of safety. It looks dark. On the other hand, I don't agree with, I do agree that the bottom one should be discouraged. That's not attractive at all, but, uh, I don't, I'm not sure that hiding the stairway, um, lends itself to, although getting out of the elements is good, I, I don't know.
I think it might prob, it would probably fall under safety as far as providing adequate lighting and access.
This one does, if you look at the picture example, it does have lighting both in the front facade and also in the, in the stairwell itself.
Twenty-five? Twenty-six?
I don't know if this, um, comes into play with this or not, but, um, at Heritage House, the residents will put plants, planters, gnomes, whatever, outside their door. They've got a little bit of their own space. But the management puts a limit on how many items they can have out there. And I don't know if that has to do with landscaping, uh, maybe somebody comes along with a mower and things are in the way or what. But when I look at these encouraged views on page twenty-six, that's, there's no personalization to the units. You know, just the, you know, the hedges and the trees and makes for a beautiful landscape. But there, there's no individualized, um, decoration to the units.
This is, this is for common landscape area, not necessarily for the private space that they would have individually. Cause you wouldn't really evaluate the pre, private space anyway at, at your level. You're only dealing with what they've got for a site plan.
So neither one of these depicts like a front, front entryway to a unit, is what you're saying? The front entryways are elsewhere, these are maybe in the back?
Um, n- n- no, no, no. What, what I'm saying is these, these guidelines relate to common area landscaping, but not private landscape areas.
Or I think that would be.
What if it would be the same?
No, it's not the same, because the private landscaping would be something that the individual property owner, renter, right, would provide, either in their porch or in their, there's their space, as opposed to that space, which would be part of the overall site plan that's managed by the, so, you know, the association, the property owner, whatever the management team would be.
What he's saying is that the person that's living here isn't gonna be pu, putting stuff.
Oh, no, I wouldn't want that.
Right.
I, I'm just saying, like, right outside your front door.
And that would be, so this planting's and landscape elements is more for the common area? Not as, not.
Not private.
Particular that area right outside your front door.
Has nothing to do with private, private landscaping.
Probably be handled by onsite management, what their, what their terms would be as far as having visible hangings or, or articles in the front of their home. Or their lease terms.
Okay.
John, have you heard any grumblings as far as, um, on the twenty-twenty-two code regarding, uh, changes to, um, water restrictive plants coming up? And water restrictive landscaping, given the drought conditions?
We, this, the state has already mandated, you know, drought tolerant plants and an evaluation that we have to go through for, um, for water usage. I haven't heard any, any tightening of those existing regulations.
We didn't, do we need to add any sort of that, that language into this?
No, no, cause it's, again, it's changes that'll come down by state law. And, I mean, if there's modifications that are recreated as a result of state law?
Yep.
I mean, it's, you, you just, you have to do it, right? It's part of the building code standard.
Yeah, like when they submit something, they have to submit, you know, Willow-guidelined landscape plans also. Again, these are just kinda guidelines. These are very like broad.
Yep.
Ideas and guidelines for them to follow. And then they have to make sure that what they're doing also fits with Willow.
Okay. All right, uh, comments on page twenty-seven? Twenty-eight? Twenty-nine?
With security, uh, you know, on a gate, uh, as we see in the one picture, is, if it goes to a, an attendant, is that when it gets to H, a larger HOA? Or is it based on the number of units? Is there any correlation there?
Says gated access shall be reserved for age-specific developments, such as senior residential.
Right, right, again, and these are, you know, the intent is that these are for, um, private, I mean, they're, they're, it's, it's, I mean, if it's an apartment project, it's all owned by one single owner, right? So there wouldn't be an HOA, there'd be, there'd be an owner and a management organization for this gated entry. For, uh, a senior housing detached project, um, you may, in that case, have an HOA that maintains things common, things like this. That'd be a unique, unique condition, obviously. But anyway, the way it's been suggested, it's only been suggested for senior residential developments. But, um, I've been involved in a lot of apartment projects. They also have gated, gated entries on that, on those projects as well, so.
But that would be a matter, I mean, I think it's important that we definitely have gated access for seniors. But if some, if a developer wanted to come in with multi-family and do gated, then that's something that we would review during site and architecture.
And, and I think it should be allowed. I mean, I don't think it should be discouraged unless you guys think it should be discouraged.
No. They wanna do it?
Sean, to your point, gated access is not required for these developments, it's just encouraged. Are we reading that the same way?
Well, I think for item number four, it's saying that for a senior project, it does need to be gated.
So the way that I'm reading it is that the only people, the, the only development that has the option is a senior development.
No, I don't think that's right. I think it needs to be available to any development.
Okay.
I think that's a good point.
Catch. So we're making it a requirement for seniors, but if another developer wanted to do it or multi-family, that would be.
I, I, I don't even think it has to be a requirement for senior.
I don't think so.
I, I think it's just available.
Let's ask our senior representative.
Oh, there you go.
So should it, but it, should it be moved from policies over to encourage then?
No, a policy, they have to do it for seniors.
As is.
Encourage means they could do it for multi-family.
I guess the point is.
The reserve needs to be changed to required.
Point is, do, do you also wanna, wanna allow developer oppor, an opportunity to have a, a gated apartment project? Yes or no? So because the way this language is, it's just, it's just a senior project would have that opportunity.
Yeah.
We did have one proposed to us a couple of years ago.
I think it, so if you could take a look at this language and say that we wanna be required for seniors, and then is incurred, well, not necessarily, is an option.
Option.
For multi-family.
Understood.
Does that work for you?
That sounds like what we were all getting at, yeah.
Ms. Willis?
Okay. Yeah. Yeah.
Any other comments on twenty-nine? All right, I'm gonna throw it out there. Under lighting or security on, on lighting. Nevermind, you have it covered. I was just worried about these monster lights that are going into the neighbor's backyard and, but it's covered. Just read it. Okay.
Third, I mean, so typically, I mean, when, um, Dominic and Jenny, when they review a site plan, the developer will be required to put together a photometrics. And that photometrics will show you, you know, light intensity for the property. And the intent is that that light intensity stays on the property and doesn't spill onto adjacent properties.
And that is something our city engineer reviews.
Thirty? Okay, so I'm gonna throw this out there for number, for walls and fencing. It came up during our review of Irwin Village as far as whose responsibility or what type of fencing did we want? And so when we were in the process of reviewing that, we talked about having a perimeter fence being CMU or some sort of durable material. And I think we have that covered under encouraged. But my question to my fellow commissioners is, do we want them? How do we say that we really want? If you're doing multi-family or senior housing, you want, we want a secure exterior perimeter as opposed to just a wood fence?
Well, isn't that encouraged, a mix of fencing walls and landscaping? Dec, use of decorative materials?
It's encouraged, but do we wanna make it a policy? Or security? So this ties directly in with security.
So are you saying that it would essentially, the development would be fenced in completely as a requirement?
I'm saying on the perimeter, you would have block wall.
Where, where it met an adjacent property? Uh, I'm, I'm trying to think of some multi-family homes where there may be some space available that, uh, a barrier would, wouldn't be required?
That's what I'm trying to figure out.
Interesting, okay.
Because, and I don't know, I'm thinking, and I'm processing this out loud, because when Irwin Village came to us, people said, okay, you're not doing anything with that fence. If, but if, if my fence falls down, Mr. Developer, are you gonna help me replace this good neighbor fence? And that was a very gray area when we were reviewing Irwin Village. Whose responsibility does that fence require? If we have it a policy, then, but then again, how's somebody gonna feel if a developer comes in and says, I'm tearing down your wood fence, now putting up a six-foot block wall? And they're saying, well, I followed the policy, and then we have an upset neighbor. I don't, I don't know, I'm kind of.
So a, a couple of things there, a couple of things there. It is common for a CMU wall to be required between a commercial development and a residential development, as an example. In an apartment project, it's not uncommon for a local jurisdiction, city of Escalon, to require a CMU wall around the perimeter of the project. Not, not the street side, but on, on the other sides that abut existing development or undeveloped property that would be developed in a residential state, so to speak. Oftentimes, those, those, those CMU walls are installed on the property line when, when the developer, um, gets the authority of the adjacent property owners and the ability to go in and build that fence. Quite often, the developers don't get that approval. And they'll build the, they'll CMU walls close to that, uh, existing fence as they possibly can. Just, so when that, the other fence, you know, blows down or whatever happens, then that, that, then the adjacent neighbor basically just gets a little bit more of the yard, which is happening.
Well, I just, I distinctly remember, uh, there was a gentleman at the podium that said, you mean to tell me that the only thing that's separating my property and what's preventing from somebody looking over at my kids swimming in their swimming pool? And there's just a wood fence right there? That's ridiculous.
And again, that, that, that's actually another issue regarding, um, design. And we've dealt with that. We're enassing, is it back enassing or something?
Yeah, in the building design section.
Remember that conversation?
When, when, when we're, you're looking down, looking down into a neighbor's, um, property, that, it's a big issue when you got like a two-story unit up against a single-story home and wanting to protect that, that privacy. And we have, um.
Yeah, you had a picture of that.
We have a picture of that. We're, I'm not sure.
Do you think that actually might be in site planning?
In site planning?
I would like to make.
Page ten?
Oh, here it is. It's on page ten. So again, the intent is, you know, to, to, you know, protect and preserve the, the, you know, the private yard space that the adjacent neighbors would have with a two-story unit. And they, we've, um, you can, and this, they have, will, can evaluate, you know, what view shed that would, uh, create as it relates to, you know, the apartment project next to a residential unit.
I would personally like to make a request to my fellow commissioners that we add a perimeter fence, at least on the non-street-facing side of these, the proposed developments. Make it a policy to put a six-foot-high CMU block wall. Make it a policy to put a six-foot-high CMU block wall, perimeter wall for security. Not just for multifamily, but it also gives our senior folks enhanced security as well.
So Dominic had a drop from the call, but she's still listening and she's texting me.
Okay.
So she has said that if you guys think you want a policy like that for the walls, that we really need to update the code for fencing rather than adding it to these design guidelines. We could still have them as encouraged or policy, whatever. But she really thinks that if you guys want to tackle that, it should be through the municipal code.
Okay, fair enough.
She'd be happy to bring that to future meeting.
Typically where it's required.
Okay. Just trying to find how we identify that because the seniors need the security, but then we also don't want our current residents to be impacted by this as well.
Yeah, and I think with fencing, it's such a compliment, complicated code anyways when we're just trying to do it for our own homes. That putting that kind of requirement in here and we don't have the code to back it up is just going to cause even more issues. So if you want to add something like that to the policy, great. But definitely she will bring back the fences, hedges, and walls portion to a future meeting. And you guys can evaluate that and put, you know, some hardcoded things into the municipal code.
We already have something in the code as far as not being able to build a two-story next to a one-story. And we had that house recently finished on First Street. And they took the window out on the second floor because they were building next to an existing one-story. And, and.
Yes, we, we definitely have, and Diana especially is really good about catching that kind of stuff to make sure that is.
And of course, a senior's only one story, we don't need to worry about it. But I, I just balk at, you know, like Heritage House has a fence around it. Doesn't have two fences, it's got a fence around it for whatever's on the north, the east, or the south side.
Right.
So for something to come in, like say on Irwin or anywhere else, I, if there's an existing fence, it seems like that should suffice. And like if you look at Heritage House, between the buildings and the fence, there's landscaping. So there's not, it's not like somebody's there looking over the fence or looking out their window or whatever because that's not where the attention is focused as far as the residents and whatnot.
Well, I'm just, I see that gentleman standing right there.
I know, I know, I remember.
A lot, a lot of times, a lot of times, you know, it wouldn't, well, many times, wooden fences just doesn't last, doesn't have longevity. And that's, and that's the other issue that you're dealing with here is that, is that you guys want to encourage developments that are well-maintained and have that longevity. And like it or not, a CMU wall with landscaping, you want to soften it up, you know, provides that longevity that, you know, you would expect a project like this to deliver.
Now, you made the comment, though, that not everybody gives you permission. So what happens when you don't get permission from everybody?
Then you build that wall as close to that property line as you possibly can. And I've done it. I mean, that's, that's what you do.
So here's the property line, literally right beside it is the fence.
You've got, it's no, it basically created no man's land, which we've done.
And correct me if I'm wrong, John, but you have built in here things like landscape buffers anyways. So there wouldn't be a building right up against the fence looking into another property anyways.
There'd be landscape.
There's going to be a landscape buffer.
Could you make a note, Jenny, that we want to look at that at a future planning commission meeting?
The landscape buffer or the fencing?
The fencing.
Okay, so, so do we, I mean, I need to understand, do we want to add? Obviously, you guys are going to deal with this through your ordinance, but do you want to add language on page 30, under encourage, a CMU wall of six foot high between the land uses and not adjacent to public streets? You want to add that in there as an encouragement or no?
I would like to encourage my fellow commissioners to add it as an encouragement. But I'm just one of four.
Well, if you're encouraging a mix of fencing and walls, I mean, it could fall under that without specifying.
That's already covered under the first blood point.
Yeah.
We're not going to shoot down an application through this whole process for them not meeting a encouragement. So I have no problem adding it in there.
Yeah, we en, is that okay with you, sir?
Yeah, that, that's fine. I think it's, it's going to come down to the code.
Right, and I'm thinking if we add it as an encouragement and then we back it up with the code, then it's a win-win. As this is a guideline, the, the code isn't a guideline, it's a requirement. Fair?
Yeah, it's just a guideline. They, they can adhere to the guideline, it's not part of the policy. So it, it's something that we would like to see, but it is not required as the document reads.
So John, you worked with our code to prepare this. And as our code changes, how much flexibility does this have?
Well, you know, it's all fluid, right? So if, you know, in working with the guidelines, which they are guidelines, there is a conflict, then, you know, you're, the, the city's development code, the city's ordinance is, they govern. They rule. So that's, that's, that's a given. And then there, there may need to be an adjustment or several adjustments, you know, as you work on projects, you know. There may be, I mean, we, gosh, we're, we're never going to be able to think of every single circumstance in these guidelines. I mean, we're, we're doing, you know, the best we can, again, with a broad net to try to capture a lot of design ideas. So as new codes come to, as new state laws come down, we have to modify our codes to accommodate state law, like, you know, accessory dwellings and junior accessory dwellings, just mentioning that.
Don't mention that.
Well, well, it's a real, it's a reality. We're all dealing with it in all the communities. So, you know, we have to modify the ordinance code. So those are the ones that, that pertain. So, yeah, we, we tried to eliminate conflicts, but gosh darn it, there's, there's got, I guarantee you, there's going to be changes to state law. They're going to, it's going to, they're going to man, it's going to be an unfunded, unfunded mandate where we're going to have to modify the development code to comply. So it is what it is.
And Dominique said that too. She said that we will need, based on what happens with this document, we will want to relook at particularly the R3 development standards because that's where you're going to see the multifamily and the senior housing mostly is the R3. So we'll definitely want to bring that back to you. Once this has been, you know, finalized and accepted by council, then we'll, we'll want to look at the R3 development standards also.
As a question to staff, slightly off topic, are there projects that are sitting, waiting, pending approval of these guidelines to move forward?
No, there's one project that has been talked about across from future Orlando's where DeBonis, that property that DeBonis used to own. There is someone talking about possibly putting multifamily there, which would be allowed in commercial, multifamily is allowed in commercial. They would just follow R3 development standards and these guidelines. Nothing, nothing firm.
Somebody waiting in the wind, in the wings to jump in there, okay.
Yeah, nothing firm. It's just more of like reached out interest, would this, something like this be allowed? Yeah.
All right, moving on to page 31.
Whoa, whoa, do we have concurrence on that extra language under encourage or not?
Yes, we do.
Okay, thank you.
It's an encouragement.
Thank you.
Page 31 signage. I had a comment on this. Jenny, do we, in the municipal code, do we require lighted building signs?
Lighted, I don't think they have to be lighted. And we do encourage monument signs like this. We encourage it to be dressed up.
I'm talking building 12, building 13, building 14, building 15.
I don't think they legally have to be lighted, but they do have to be visible. So it doesn't mean like the sign itself has to be lighted, but there's light in the area that allows it to be seen, you know.
Actually, never mind, that's, that's right here, number two. Building numbers and individual unit numbers shall be visible, internally illuminated and consistent. So never mind.
That's what they're adding to the, I, right now, as of now, I don't think that is a policy. Just that it has to be well-visible.
And this is really a fire, really a fire issue too, really, when you think about it.
Yeah.
Fire and emergency services.
Any comments on 31? 32. 33. 34. All right, now we're moving into the self-certification checklist.
Sorry?
Sure.
Back to 33 real quick on the storage.
Yeah.
Are we all good with that portion? Storage areas shall be located within the dwelling unit or in a central location within the site. Does that just mean they can be anywhere? They're not specifically stuck to, okay, it's attached to the side of their specific unit? There can be a centralized storage area that they can all have some type of outdoor, outdoor storage?
Yeah, that's who, that's who we did with the Irwin Village.
The Irwin Village, yeah. They either, yeah, the option of providing storage inside or he's also building this like storage building that residents can utilize.
And the rationale behind that is if it's inside the unit, then it starts impacting the square footage?
I just wanted to make sure that I was reading it correctly and that you guys, I think, clarified that for me. So it doesn't have to be at the dwelling. But there will be individual secured, protected storage.
They have to have storage based on the municipal code.
We like for them to have storage so that they're not utilizing their garages if they have a garage for storage.
Okay, moving on to self-certification checklist. Page 35. And obviously, the changes that we made previous to the document, we want to make sure that we incorporate those updates into the self-storage checklist. Or, I'm sorry, the self-planning checklist.
And just to note that this, this goes along with what I said before. They're going to mark yes or no if they met those things and their comments why. So that'll give you, you know, if every one of these is yes, except for a few, it, it gives you things to focus on so that you're not going one by one to make sure it's what you'd like.
Okay.
It's also based on their opinion.
But as staff, we also love this because it's going to make it easier for us because a lot of times the projects will come in and ask us for help. And so for us to have this kind of document to where we can go one by one with them, and if they have a no that they're thinking, we can get their rationale then. We kind of try to head off issues that may arise that we know you guys are not necessarily going to like. So it will help even more when it comes to when you guys see it at the meeting.
37. 38. 39. 40. 42. 43. 44.
Going faster than I can move.
Back on this, this may sound silly, but on 43A, is that word right, water-intensive landscaping? Is that the right term? That seems like, to me, that seems like high-water usage.
It is because they're talking about turf grass, that's just turf grass.
So it's saying that this type of landscaping should only be used or primarily used in these open spaces.
Okay, okay.
Just a clarification, as we've skipped through these pages, all of the recommendations and changes that we've made on previous pages will obviously apply to the checklist?
44. 45. 46. And 47. Okay. So bringing it back to the commission. We have a, a motion on the table to make the proposed amendments. And actually, yes, we need to.
You want me to, Mr. Chairman, you want me to summarize what pages I believe we're making changes to? Would that be helpful to you?
What do you all think?
When's this going to council?
It's a great question. It definitely won't go to the next meeting because that's the 18th. So probably sometime next month. The first or the 15th. I think those are the two meetings next month. Oh, it has to be advertised in the newspaper with another public hearing. So however many days that has to go out ahead of time.
We have to do a public hearing or council has to do a public hearing?
We, this is our public hearing and then council will also have to do a public hearing.
We're okay.
John, your note-taking is wonderful. I'm sure you.
What I was going to tell you is that we'll do a red line
Okay.
of these changes. And we'll present those back to staff so they can share them with you. But that's fine. I wanted to go over the pages, I think, that we're adjusting, if that's okay. I mean, just not all the individual adjustments, just what pages are affected by those changes.
I would appreciate that just for many purposes.
So I, I heard changes to the acknowledgement, which is not a page number per se. Making changes to page seven. We're making changes to, bear with me, page 13. Making changes to page 16. Changes to page 19. Change, change to page 20 and, and 21. Page, um, 22 relative to scale. Bear with me a minute. 29, 30. I think that's it.
Any other comments, commissioners? Thank you, John. All right, so do we have a motion to approve the resolution recommending to the city council approval pending changes to the updates by Mr. Anderson? An adoption of the multifamily senior residential design guidelines?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution recommending to the city council approve and adopt based on the red lines of the multifamily and senior residential design guidelines.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. All those in favor, please respond by saying aye.
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 And for, for the record, that is a, action was taken on a resolution, draft resolution. It was part of your agenda package as attachment A.
And that will be updated to show you as the chair.
All right, motion passes 4-0. Thank you. Thank you for your input, Ms. Shaddix. You're very welcome. Well, thank you both for coming. And Mr. Anderson and Joshua, I didn't get your last name?
Jordan.
Mr. Anderson, Mr. Jordan, thank you for all of your hard work. Very much appreciate it. Probably thought you were going to come in here and we were just going to go through it, but we take our job serious.
We, we, we know better than that.
Well, unfortunately, this. Unfortunately, this is.
It's all good.
Yeah.
This was a very easy-to-read and well-put-together document.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Appreciate that. All right, again, the intent is it's a tool that staff and you will be able to use and it has to be flexible. There likely will be changes needed, but at least it gives you a basis to start from. So when you have applicants coming forward, staff can share with them, this is what our expectations are, rather than an open book.
Right. All right. Jenny, do we have any administrative matters?
Not today.
All right. Any other matters presented from the audience? If you have any other items you would like discussed, please come to the podium. All right, staff communications?
Enassing her.
Okay.
Our city planner position is still open, so if you know somebody, Diana would love to finally fill up, and Dominique would love to finally fill that position so that she's not having to wear both hats.
All right.
I think she's typing, hold on one second. Trying to think of what else I can tell you guys. It's been very, very busy at City Hall lately.
Good.
Why don't we go ahead and skip to Commissioner Communications?
Sure.
And then if she comes back, we can go back to Staff Communications.
All right, let's start tonight with Commissioner Engel.
Just appreciation for everybody's time and effort here, I agree. And second, the comment that the document was well-put-together and easy to read and considering the amount of information that we went through, I felt that it, it went fairly smoothly. Appreciate that.
All right. Commissioner Willis?
Well, ditto. Also, was there an update on Orlando's?
They are working, yes. They, their demo contractor, I think, has already done most of the demolition. We are getting business licenses in daily for their contractors, so they have like their set contractors already. So they're, I think they're going to start moving, which is exciting, at least for the internal part of the store. I think there's still some issues with the gas station portion.
Is Lear's rentable yet?
Almost. And it's not going to be rented, those ones are going to be sold.
The four units in the front?
Yeah. But I think those four units are, are pretty close, is my understanding. He has some site stuff still, so he has some landscaping he has to put in, he'll need to re-asphalt and stripe the parking areas, they've kind of gotten torn up during the construction. But yeah, he's definitely getting closer, which is exciting.
Vice Chair Sarkozy?
That's all good.
Don't fall over, but I have nothing for Commissioner Communications.
I do have a staff communication for you now.
Actually, I do have one item for Commissioner Communications and that is wish a speedy recovery to Commissioner Castellanos.
And for Staff Communications, city council nominations open on Monday and they close August 12th. So if you or someone you know would like to run for city council, those binders will be available starting Monday.
Anything else?
All she gave me.
All right. Well, thank you, Jenny, for your time and we will adjourn the meeting at 8:43. Thank you.
All right.
All righty.
Thank you.
Thank you.